Hey, good evening. It is Tuesday, April 26th. Welcome everybody to the Board of Selectmen's meeting. It is around 6:02. I'll call this meeting to order if you'd all rise and sing the flag.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
So, we usually give out the annual reports at the upcoming town election and the town meeting, and usually the selectmen's meeting before that, we have the dedication of that report. So, we'll start right there.
I don't have one.
You were late. It's not often that we dedicate a town report to a sitting member of the select board. However, John Tripp is a worthy exception. A lifelong resident in North Brookfield, John was elected to the Board of Selectmen in 2018. He's also a sitting member of the planning board. John's affection for North Brookfield and its residents may be unsurpassed, always a person to help out. As a member of the Board of Selectmen, he often responds in person to various concerns residents or town employees have. John has devoted incredible amounts of time and money to various projects for the betterment of North Brookfield. The following is a list. The following list is substantial but not exhaustive of the projects he has spearheaded or assisted with. Cleaning up and painting of the townhouse, cleaning up, grading, and repairing the old railroad bed to accommodate a new rail trail, manufactured gateposts for all rail trail road crossings, cleanup and renovation of the town park at School Street and North Main Street, began cleanup of the Bates Observatory, and is actively searching for ways to rebuild, leading in discussion of the remodel projects for the new highway department and fire station. John has worked tirelessly to improve North Brookfield for the future. He could not have done or continued to do all of this without the support, patience, and assistance of his wife Mindy, who can also be seen occasionally in John's area lift hanging or removing flags from poles on Main Street or helping paint. This is hardly an exhaustive list of the things John and Mindy have participated in or will participate in. So, in dedication to Mr. and Mrs. John Tripp, North Brookfield says thank you and we appreciate you. And we also have...
Now we get it.
Now you got one. We also have special recognition in here. The Board of Selectmen would also like to recognize Trevor Brusso, member of the Board of Health. During the COVID-19 pandemic, Trevor was instrumental in keeping North Brookfield residents informed and safe by regularly updating the public with information on the town's website, code red calls, and Facebook. Trevor organized vaccinations for residents that were homebound and provided test kits for residents when available. The Board of Selectmen, along with the town of North Brookfield, thanked Trevor for his dedication to his position and seemingly endless volunteer hours he's given to us. So... Thank you, Trevor.
Thank you.
And in the back, there is a picture of John.
Oh gee. He's not sitting.
It's sitting right there.
Who took it?
I did. I told him Tara missed him and wanted a picture.
So, it's Tara's fault?
Well, it's Jason's fault for saying that.
You guys are awful people.
So...
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have no minutes to approve. Approve the warrants. I'll entertain a motion to approve payroll number 22 for $365,776.63. Payroll number 22A for $2,530. General warrant number 1053 for $289,568.73. School warrant 1052 for $190,651.92.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Reserve fund request for the Board of Health.
This is to pay for the trash bags, and it was scanned, so we don't have an original, but...
Okay. So, the amount requested is $9,850 to be transferred to the appropriate account. Current balance in that appropriations is $135.56. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve that transfer.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Mark Schreiber.
Schreiber.
Schreiber. Good to go racing. All right. You have the floor.
My name is Mark Schreiber. I am from Fremont, Michigan, and my connection here is with the family, the Libby family. Dave Libby has been a mentor of mine. Dave Libby, not junior, but the son, for 30 years, and he is back here with his mom for some time. And I've been, this will be the fourth year that I've been here, trying to expand RC racing. And what I do, just a little background, is I have an organization for five years where I teach kids how to build and race RC cars, very similar to that. And being exposed to Dave Libby, who's quite the historian, he's told me quite a bit about this town, and he's made it aware that there's a need for the town hall. So, I have a proposal to do a Memorial Day race to raise funds and awareness for the town hall. By so doing, it would be a three-day event. He would have two days of qualifying events, Saturday and Sunday. And then Monday, I would like to, I would propose that we have a final race immediately following Memorial Day race directly in front of town hall. And we'd be able to raise funds through ticket sales for the entry of the race, through gifts, sponsorships, and food sales. And the idea is introducing RC racing is, it's a really cool thing. It catches everybody's attention. But from an educational standpoint for kids, that's where my heartbreak is. I've seen kids change their entire life, the direction of their life, because they've developed a competence for what they're doing, and therefore that develops confidence. And I have seen kids that have been absolutely bullied in school and just completely turn around and start getting better grades. And the benefit of that, and I mean, now this is my quick story, I was at the Common last Monday, and I mess with people. I go out and I drive my cars. I'm like the pipe piper. And then kids show up because they want to play with the car. And the first question they ask is, "How fast does it go?" And I said, "Well, let's use math to figure it out." And she says, "What do you mean?" I said, "The constant is if an object moves 100 feet in one second, it's moving at 68.18 miles per hour. So, if we can calculate 100 feet," which I have 100-foot tape measure, I measured out 100 feet right in front of them. I had a driver drive their car. I stood there and went to the start line. I had a guy down there, a girl down there with stopwatch. I would say go when the car went past. She would click the stopwatch at the end, and it was three some odd seconds, and I know that the car was driving 22 miles an hour. The mom is watching all this with her eyes bugged out, like, "My kid is already mad." So, the idea of bringing this here, I teach kids, I have a race camp that we call, and we could, we have four weeks of promotion where we could promote this, get it out in the community, get it out through different media outlets and social media, internet. We could promote it on my website, things like that. So, I'm here to just propose the idea. I have more, I have everything written out here, but I just wanted to start that. So, I'm not familiar with the format here. I'm asking the same questions.
Well, I think it's a great idea. I think that the only, the only real issue would be coordinating it with, you know, in the right time of day, so it doesn't interfere with the parade.
My thought is have the parade go through, and while the street is still shut down, let's turn around and have the final race. The qualifying races are Saturday and Sunday, and there'd be only one race on Monday, Memorial Day. And how I'd like, I propose doing it is we're gonna, there's different levels of how much you want to promote this. One would be just promoting it through the Brookfields and the Brookfield schools to just try to have a nice community thing that they can start looking for. Or we can expand it out to that. We can go to like the surrounding Quaybog areas. And with the four Brookfields, we would have four quadrants. So, you'd have a driver from each quadrant that would be racing to win that position, and that number one qualifier would race in the finale. We'd have two days of qualifying because it's Memorial Day weekend, somebody can't be there on Saturday, but they could be there on Sunday. So, my proposal is that we have Saturday and Sunday at the Common. I just need one or two basketball courts to put my racetrack in. I actually did that two years ago when I was here visiting in July. And at that time, it was Dan, there was a selectman named Dan Roman, who he gave me the green light.
Played my green light.
Yeah, okay. He gave me the green light to go do that. Excuse me, I get nervous when I vote. So anyways, it's, I've been here for a few years. I've actually done events at the Common already. And tying it all together is the winner of the four quadrants, you know, they win the final race. And I can't really say anything, but the prize that could be won for that, for the winner, could be quite substantial, and it would bring a lot of publicity to North Brookfield. And the potential fundraising from just tickets, entry fees alone, would be a gross revenue of about $4,600. Now, we would split that 50/50. 50 would go directly to the townhouse, and the 50% would go to Good to Go Productions for prizes promotion and, there's another P, I forgot, but prizes promotion and something else. But that's, I know there's a lot to take in, and it's also a new concept, so I'd be very much willing to talk with people afterwards. And again, this is just the idea phase, just planting a seed, let's see where it goes.
You're saying from the four Brookfields, who would be racing? Just grownups, or would you have kids?
I would...
Classes, or how do you do that so that the kids can participate?
Eight to 18 is the sweet spot. And then we would allow adults to race, but not competitively. So, hey, I want to race. It costs me $5. The $5 goes right in the pot, and they get their three-minute race.
Okay. But it's only the, it's only the eight to 18s that are gonna be into that?
Yeah. The ones that could win the really big prize would be the eight to 18. And that prize would, could be a, for the winner and one guardian on a Royal Caribbean cruise.
So, how do the kids sign up for that in town?
We would have a whole registration thing. And what I plan on doing is saying, "Okay, you can buy raffle tickets at stores in town. You can buy them at the town hall." We'd have, we're gonna be talking, as soon as I get the green light, I'm gonna go bang on doors for sponsorships. Would you like to be a part of this? And so, people can register, they can register online through our website. They can register at those different ticket locations.
Is the ball court big enough to do your track?
Yeah. I'm kind of revolutionizing RC racing, because in real RC racing, if you go to a competitive event, you're there all day.
Yeah.
Now, I can do three races, three-minute races, three minutes back-to-back. I can do three races, you know, A, B, and C, and a warm-up in 15 minutes. So, now I have four, I have four series per hour. If I have four tracks, I have, I can multiply that.
Okay.
And the track is very simple. It's two objects 20 feet apart.
Okay, just a straight race.
It's just an old, well, it's a slight, there's three objects, but I didn't want to get into details. It's just a slight D-shaped oval.
Okay.
And it...
So, everybody has to bring their own car?
Oh, no, no. I have plenty of my own cars.
Secrets.
And actually, that's one of the things that makes it fair. All the cars are exactly the same, so it's a level playing field. So, if you have a guy that comes in and brings his own car, and he's got this hot rod, he doesn't have to worry about the door. The idea is to take anybody in this room, like, put a controller in your hand, and in three minutes, I can have you going around the thing. And again, they're all the same car.
What's the entry fee?
$15. And actually, that's flexible, but the idea is that's, to me, that's the price point where people say, "Hey, if I'm doing this for the town hall, we can do that." You know, we could go 20, we could go 12. I need to get that thing. But 15 is also the standard entry when you race an RC race. It's $15 for the first class, 10 for every additional class.
Look into it and see how it, how it plays out, I guess.
Well, it is coming up fairly quickly.
Yeah.
Right. So, we've got just over four weeks to do this.
Yeah.
And the whole idea would be that the Downtown Development Committee would be one of the hosts, the race.
Right.
So, it's a hand-in-glove relationship.
And you've talked to them already?
I have an email out to them, and I haven't heard back as much as I would like.
Do we need any liability things?
I have liability insurance for that.
Okay.
Which we cover, yes.
Play your own committee have any thoughts on it?
Play your own committee have any thoughts on it?
I've seen them set up. The kids love it. I think it would be a good idea.
You were at the Fourth of July on the Common last year?
Yeah, last year, I was jumping over myself.
Were you there the other day?
Yeah, I'm there as much as I can.
I saw you, yeah.
Oh, was there Saturday?
You were there while we were working on the...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And I was messing with the kids at the soccer field. I loved it. If you go on the North Brookfield Happenings page, you can see a video.
Yeah, yeah. Cool.
And he's right, the kids do show up. He shows up with them. The kids do show up. They, any lessons play with them.
Oh, yeah.
Little ones. And they're really good at it.
Well, the little ones, I just take all the speed out of it, so the grand total is
one mile an hour.
Right, just to get it.
No math required.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? Okay.
Whether we need to vote on letting him...
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to let him proceed with going forward with it, just keep us updated. And so, if there's any problems, you know, we can just stop.
And I would just make sure I get everybody's correct email, and put an email chain together and that kind of thing.
Cool.
And I have the proposals here. I mean, I guess I may get, I'll give one to each review, and then I can also print out the remainder, and people can share.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
You're with them, you aren't...
Yeah. Oh, you're with them, I got it. Thank you, Mark. All right. Sue Lyons.
Start your engine.
You're next.
Yeah. Coming up. Should we go, Ash? If you want to, I would care, I think. That's gonna be my idea. Yeah, I wonder if, well, you've got microphones on. Sometimes it's hard to hear people.
You can take mine if...
I didn't know it was too loud. Just move them all down there. I guess just walk in.
I'm good on that one, yeah. That should be good.
I think I did.
Yeah.
Not gonna land, but...
All set?
All set.
So, on June 19th, 20, uh, June 19th, 2019, most people here know I had a massive heart attack. They call it widow maker. And I was fortunate enough to make the 911 phone call before I dropped like a stone. And two rescue squads showed up, East Brookfield and North Brookfield. And East Brookfield had a device called a Lucas machine, which North Brookfield now has, we didn't at that time. And the Lucas machine does compressions, so that when the responders come, they put you on that machine, and the machine does all the compressions, you know, like they would have to do, but it frees them up to do other things. And the one that we have, and the one that was used that day, is made by a company called Stryker. So, after I recovered from my heart, well, I wasn't, I was under recovering, I made a letter that I decided, well, I'm gonna write this to them and thank them for inventing this device. So, I wrote them a letter and thanked them. And about a month later, I was invited by Stryker to come to Kalamazoo, Michigan, of all places, and, and meet the people that are partially involved with developing it. And so, I said, "Sure, let's do it." So, I went out to Kalamazoo, and while I was out there, I spoke to all of the employees, which was probably 200 or 300 people. And they had this televised, it was televised not only to the other Stryker places in the United States, but also to France, to India, Sweden, and I can't remember the other, the other, the other countries, but it was a lot of countries. So, after I was done with my talk, their president, Brad Sager, came up to me, and he said, "You know, you really went through it. You're one of the worst ones that we know." And I was like, "Oh gee, thanks. I'm happy to be famous for that." And he said, "And we've decided collectively that we would like you to pay it forward." So, he said, "I have this for you." And he handed me a brand-new defibrillator. And he said, "We want you to give it to whoever you think is deserving of it." So, that was around January of 2020, and I don't know if you all remember what happened in January of 2020, but that was the beginning of the wonderful time we started out with COVID. So, at that time, I also got in touch with Senator Goby, thank you for coming, Senator Goby's office, and said, "You know, hey, Ann, you gotta help me out. We gotta find, you know, you gotta help me find where I can donate this." Because if anybody's gonna know what town and what organization is struggling financially, she certainly would. So, we worked together for a while, and we came up with some ideas, and then COVID got worse, and I ended up not having, not having given it to anybody. So, flash forward, you know, I'd say over the course of the last nine months, I haven't been particularly motivated to do much for, for the town for three reasons, but, you know, I looked at this situation, and I said, "I wonder what's going on with our, with our rescue squad?" And I found out that they really needed one in their ambulance. And I was like, "Whoa." Because I was looking at churches, I was looking at schools, I was looking at other town halls, I was looking all over, you know, the area to see who might really, really benefit from having one. And so, with my favorite person here, Patrick, I'm pleased to donate this defibrillator to our North Brookfield Rescue Squad, to, to a guy who's responded to my house more times than I'd like to, like to own up to. But this is something that I think our town needs, and I certainly hope you never have to use it.
I certainly hope I never have to use it, but it's good to know that we have it when we do need it. And we do need it. We do. We don't need that, but we just need it. Thank you. Everybody, thank you so much.
That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Next thing we have on the agenda is an application for a one-day liquor license for Brookfield Orchards. It's actually for several one-day licenses, I think.
They do this every year.
Yep. So, every year, they do weekends and fairs, they have activities, and the list is as follows. May 14th, June 25th, July 16th, August 13th and 27th, September 10th, 11th, 17th, 18th, 24th, and 25th, October 1st, 2nd, 8th, 9th, and 10th. That's a wine and beer license for the season of 2022. Like I said, they do it every year. They've never had a problem, so I'll entertain a motion to approve that licensing.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. March Fire Report. You wanna take it?
Yeah, if you want to read it.
All right.
Thank you.
John, you wanna read that?
Sure. The monthly fire report for March 2022. Applications to become a North Brookfield firefighter, one new application, fundraisers, non-disperiod equipment repair, minor repairs, light bulbs, et cetera. Fire prevention, continue working on pre-fire plans, continue to respond as needed for any after-action situations, numerous building inspections, continuing classes online for prevention members. Shawn Adams was moved into a First Lieutenant position, probation for six months before he receives the permanent position. Training search and rescue drills, new recruits working on fire ground operations, fire station maintenance, general cleaning, painted the stairwell area. Responses, one structure fire, mutual aid to OCAM, 11 medical assists, one motor vehicle accident, two motor, two smoke detector activations, three CO calls, one severe weather cover station and response, one electrical equipment failure. Grants, there are two grants still open that was applied for, for brush helmets. Permit inspections, 15 permit inspections and numerous burning permits issued. Sincerely, Chief Hallway.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the monthly fire report.
So moved.
For March. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
The contract, you don't have to worry about. That was signed last week.
So, we have a letter from the town treasurer. Says to whom it may concern, effective May 2nd, 2022. Kindly remove Ann Janetti from treasurer from all accounts for the town of North Brookfield and add Allison Bulger as her replacement. The attached list. So, Ann is retiring from being the treasurer, and she's been training Allison Bulger as the new treasurer, and I believe Ann will stay on as needed. So, I'll entertain a motion to remove Ann Janetti from those accounts listed here, attached, and add Allison Bulger as her replacement.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Nancy's been very helpful.
Nancy's been doing it for two years.
Yeah. Now, we have a Chapter 90 project request. The requested amount is $64,295. It's for North Street, and it's for resurfacing bituminous concrete overlay with no lane markings. Work to be done by municipal forces. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve and sign that.
And that's a second coat on North Street, I think?
Yes.
On that road. And doesn't that money get referred, returned through Chapter 90?
Chapter 90.
Yeah, yeah. So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, just congratulations to John. He's done a whole lot for the town. I want to say, two of the biggest value-added projects lately, I can see that hardly cost the town much at all, is the rail trail project, and of course, Joe and his crew down there at the town forest park with the disc golf and everything. Those two projects have really, I think, generated a lot of interest in outdoor activities and people coming in from outside of town, and it's starting to really put North Brookfield on the map. But thank you, John.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Brandon. You've helped out a lot on most of my projects. And Tina, Tina, too.
I just, we've got pay nights up for coming up in June, so Selectmen's Office and any retired firefighters and any employees from the town are coming along. We'll have the gate set, and I'll send it to your office, put pay nights up at the fire station. So, we'll be requesting a one-day legal license, and we'll have coverage from... So we'll be requesting a one-day legal license, and we'll have coverage from another community for the year. And we're gonna be doing two lifesaving awards that night, and one promotional for the six-month period that's going by. And second chance, if you get awarded, that's two out of three. You have the third one, that's a big one, that's eighteen, so that's turnout, you have for about eighty thousand dollars worth, we won't have to lease if I get it, keep my fingers crossed. That's a tough one to get. The other two went through, and again, congratulations, John and Holly, guys, they should all help, let everything with the station and everything move forward.
What, what's the date on the pay night?
I, I have it in my phone.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'll, I'll send it to your office.
You're good? Nothing about the playground?
Oh, baseball, then, yes. I think this Saturday, we might actually be.
See you, Joe.
Right to the edge of having it done.
Nice.
Yes, I mean, we got a little, what's it, like a pie?
Yeah.
That little curve, but, we know, so many people have come out there to help us, and the work that they do is, I didn't work Sunday.
Yes, you did, you made, you made Amber.
I made.
We broke her on Saturday.
I was broken, yes. So everybody that lives there on Saturday, they busted their butt. And, yeah, by the end of Sunday, I'm sure they were all dragging. I sent a lot of them coming out there to work, he's loving doing that, which surprised me, because, I mean, he works all week long.
Yeah.
And he does a lot of heavy work.
Yeah.
But he's been really getting into that, and I guess he's bringing his boys with him this weekend.
Yeah, we should be able to finish it up, yeah. And I wanna thank Brandon and Dave for doing the bubbler, the bubla.
The bubla.
The bubla, they, they fixed the, the wood thing that was underneath it, and put some stone dust and some stones down there. Brandon got the wood, made the box himself, and him and Dave.
It's actually there, it's been gone for two years.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was kind of a tripping hazard.
It was, yeah, yeah. It, it come out really good, so, yeah. The playground's starting to shape up, so.
All right, announcements. Annual Town Election is Monday, May second, twenty twenty-two, at the Senior Center from seven AM to eight PM.
I don't have a list or anything, okay, just gonna, I'll look there.
Special Town Meeting is Friday, May sixth, at seven PM. The Annual Town Meeting is Friday, May sixth, at seven thirty PM. Water main flushing continues, see the water department's Facebook page for details. And the Senior Center is looking for part-time volunteers. And that announcement.
The colored paper.
It's in here? Volunteer Fair at the North Brookfield Senior Center, Wednesday, May eighteenth, from nine AM to seven PM. And there's arts and crafts, COA board members, education program instructors, friendly visitor, games and activities, greeter, receptionist, kitchen, cook, serve, medical ride driver, COA friends member, newsletter committee, party setup, and decorations, and special events, those are all things that they're looking for volunteers for. And then again, that's at Wednesday, May eighteenth, nine AM to seven PM. And that concludes the announcements that I have here.
Have they advertised for new director? Do you know, they have?
It's on the sign, it's posted in the window, and it's on the website.
Just have a question about that, volunteering there. Do you need, like, have a court check or something to?
We're trying to figure that out, what the legality is on who needs to be court checked. So she does have a court check system in place. I know when she gets regular volunteers, I think certain ones like medical rides and stuff like that, you do need to be court checked, so I'm looking into the regulations on that.
Can I mention something about the Senior Center? I met with them last week, and I'm gonna be doing, for the next three Wednesdays, from twelve to two, I'll be doing an interactive thing with RC cars there.
Oh, cool.
So if you wanna come check it out, that'd be my opportunity.
You're gonna let them drive?
I'm gonna take the speed out.
I'm just saying, you know?
Yeah, I'm gonna take the speed out, because I don't want to damage ankles.
Maybe I'll, maybe I'll come over.
Correct, from, from twelve to two.
Are you done? You're looking at me? Yeah, I just wanna thank everybody, this, this was great. You guys are awful people, doing that to me tonight. I can't believe the kids, I can't believe the kids kept it a secret.
I had to swear out to secrecy.
I asked you for a book three weeks ago.
And I said no.
And she said, she said we can't hand them out yet. I'm like, whatever, because I was looking in some of the older ones.
You say that you know who I am?
No. Usually what Ashley says is what we need to do, so.
Why, if I need you to do something, I have to go through.
Go through Ashley, you gotta, you gotta clear it, yeah. So thank you, everybody that, that helped out, and whoever wrote up that bunch of stuff. Jason did that, thank you, Jason.
You're welcome.
I'll get a hug later.
All right.
My spiritual support. That's it.
All right, so that concludes this meeting, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody, and have a good night.